Was able to sell old laptop computers across the district. And in doing so, many did not end up in a landfill, which is one good thing. And the second thing was the proceeds from that amounted to $30,803. As also was mentioned, there is a need at Mountain View Middle School for laptops and laptop carts. So, Mr. Davis, that's where we are looking to expend those funds to purchase laptops for, you know, again, for Mountain View Middle School. So, from there, I guess if there were any questions or comments from the public, and then we would appreciate then a vote to accept and expend that amount of money.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any public comment on this hearing? Okay, seeing none. Jenny, your comment, question?
Scott, would you further explain why it's important for us to keep that money for laptops in that the students have to use the laptops-
Sure.
-to do their testing?
Yeah.
And a lot of the students have a hard time doing the specific things that are needed to do in the testing. And if they don't understand exactly that laptop and how to do the things that the test is asking them to do on that laptop, sometimes that is what decreases their test score. Not necessarily that they don't know the information, but they're just not familiar with the way that they have to do it on that laptop that they're required to use. So, could you just explain maybe some of that?
Yeah, I just, if I could, just, I'll go back just a little bit. We do not have a one-to-one laptop or device program in the Goffstown School District. We do employ laptop carts in all of our schools, albeit elementary, middle, and high school. The middle school has the least number of laptops, you know, per student, and it also has the oldest. The age of the laptops that we have are well in excess of eight to 10 years old. Therefore, we have a shortage of laptop carts, and the ones that we do have are older. And because we use our laptops not just for delivering curriculum content, but we also use it a lot during state testing, Mountain View Middle School is the only school in which we test in every single grade throughout the district. So, that adds more use for these laptop carts. And having a reliable laptop, one that is not going to, you know, have issues while in the middle of testing is critical. So, we tend to use these for four to five weeks, you know, in a row. And within that period of time, there are very few laptop carts that are used for students, for curriculum. So, this will help. It's not going to solve the problem, as Jared and I talked about at Budget Committee meetings, and Jess Milligan, the principal, also addressed, you know, there is a need for additional laptop carts and replacement carts, and we have to get on a better cycle of that, because we've been using grant funds to buy them and to, in some cases, refresh them when they get old. So, a little bit of, in a nutshell, getting to your question, but it does at least demonstrate, you know, the need for these.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Is there any other comments? Go ahead, Shane.
Scott, thank you for that. Mr. Davis, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm ready.
But you're in the process. Could you tell us why MBMS needs these laptops a little bit? Scott kind of went through it, but you're there every day, so could you kind of walk us through what some of the kids are missing and?
So, just to throw some of the numbers. So, right now in the seventh grade, we have about 250, roughly about 250 students with access to 50 computers for that 250 students. That's if they're all working. So, that's under 20% of students have access to technology in any given day. Eighth grade's a little bit worse than that, because it's a larger group of about 280 students, so you're looking at about 17% of the students. When testing is going on for that four, five, six weeks, there is literally no technology available for any kind of curriculum, any kind of research.
Only testing.
Just, yeah, only for testing.
During that entire testing window.
Yeah.
All technology is deployed just for testing.
That's like a month-long window.
Longer.
And what was, yeah, what was pointed out is the testing is very specific as far as the, how it's laid out on the computers. And because there is so little access to the technology, we have to kind of scramble around as the testing comes close to try and expose these students to what these, what this is going to look like on any given day.
The platform.
Yeah, on the platform that they're going to be using to test. And I, my own personal opinion is I don't think that, you know, a couple of days of exposure is really enough to get them solid with all the tools, all the resources that are available during the testing. But because we have so limited access to technology, that's kind of what they get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else, questions or comments? Somebody want to do, give a motion? Go ahead, Rhonda.
I'll make a, oops, I hope I have all the words right, but I'll make a motion to use the $30,803 earned by selling old laptops towards buying new laptops and carts for MBMS.
Can I make a friendly insertion of two words?
Yes.
Accept and expend.
Accept and expend.
Expend the $30,000, right.
So, just to be clear, we're asking for authorization to take the money in and to spend the money to buy the new technology for the middle school?
Right. I accept that. Thank you.
Did you get that, Denise?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Rhonda. Do I have a second? By Caroline, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, aye, oppose, abstaining. We're unanimous. Everyone said yes. All right, so I need to-
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
By Jack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, oppose, abstaining. We're unanimous. Everybody said yes. All right, so now we're going to go into our school board meeting, which I called to order at 7:08. We did the pledge, and then correspondence.
So, in the correspondence folder today, we had a nice article about Meredith Winterburn, and congratulations to her and the work of the girls' basketball team. And I wanted to share with board members the email that Mr. McBride sent out to families, letting him, letting them all know of his retirement at the end, end of next school year.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, commendations, good news. Brady.
All right, so students at GHS just had their January midterm exams, which, for students who are taking semester-long classes, marks the end of their classes, and so they will be switching over to the new classes they will be taking for semester two. And then with that, of course, semester two is starting, so shouldn't be too much of a change for students, but just a little bit of switch around in schedules possibly. Student Council is having their canned food drive coming up. That's going to be the week of February 10th to February 14th. Also on Student Council, winter carnival has been moved to around March. I'm not sure the exact date on that. And then for the music department, tickets to go see Phantom of the Opera are now on sale.
Awesome. Thank you, Brady. Mrs. Bean.
All right, I got a lot. You ready?
Yep.
On January 16th, the National Honor Society held its student-led induction ceremony. They welcomed 50 new members and recognized this year's honorary inductee to be Erin McKinnon for her amazing work in the classroom and as an advisor to Student Council. Our new student members will continue to offer daily tutoring services to their peers, as well as serve the Goffstown community in some upcoming spring events, which include the community cleanup and also assisting in the field days at our elementary schools. Yesterday, at our indoor track and field meet, Kara Tishida broke the school record in the 600 meters. Her time was a minute and 45.1 seconds. This record was formerly held by Julia Trust, set back in 2017, and she beat that record by 4.2 seconds.
Wow.
We're happy to announce that we now have an intro to programming Python course. It started this week, it starts this week, and already we have two full sections. This course is going to earn college credit through MCC and prepare students to take the PCEP entry-level Python programming certification. Students, student develop, software development, syntax, problem solving, and real-world application will be explored in a semester-long course. We've wanted that course for a while, so it's, it's good that it's finally here. Algebra II honors kids just wrapped up their first three units of quadratics with a real-life simulation. Students pulled their knowledge of quadratics and also had to pull back knowledge from geometry, their trigonometry knowledge. They were given just an angle that a launcher was going to launch at and the velocity of the launcher. Next, they had to use all of their math to determine how far away to put the cup so that when they launched the ball bearing out of the launcher, it would land or hit, land in or hit the cup. Lots of kids hit the cup. Overwhelmingly, students said this was a great experience, and they liked applying what they had learned to a real-life scenario. The English department held their poetry-out-loud competition on January 8th, and the runner-up was Caitlin Starry, and the winner was Kira Shifer. Kira will compete in the regional competition in the New England, at New England College on February 22nd. Our peer outreach is currently working on two projects. The first is to attend a training in March called Getting to Y, which is a New Hampshire and Vermont initiative that students are going to teach each other how to effectively interpret the data from the youth risk behavior survey that they recently took. They will use strength-based, a strength-based model as a first step, which means they will examine what's going well for GHS based on the at-risk survey numbers. And seniors Sophie Roussel will, the co-president of Peer Outreach, will be spearheading that effort. In their second project, members will join a student-led coalition of nearby high schools, student leaders, recognize on drug and alcohol prevention. Co-president sophomore Ari London and co-secretary, secretaries freshman Hadley Vitale and June Olson are taking on this and hoping to determine what, what's working and what are the best practices for student-led clubs leading the effort on drug and alcohol prevention. On Sunday, June 26th, the GHS Hiking Club conquered the first winter climb of, in the New Hampshire White Mountains. The team led by, I'm going to slurs this name, and I apologize, Jack DiChristoforo, and members Rory Daniels, Bennett Morgan, and McKenna Kelly hiked in near blizzard-like conditions to reach the summit of, the summit views of Mount Willard. If you have any more information, if you'd like any more information about the Hiking Club, you could reach out. You could stop by room 310 if you happen to be in the high school, or Scott Maya is their advisor. We have an unofficial physics club forming at GHS anchored by Sophie Garso and Emma Bird. Students have been gathering weekly to practice and prepare for a competition called Physics Olympiad, which will be held on February 12th. This is an online event where students compete to solve complex physics problems as a lead-up to a larger APP, AAPT event. Again, if you have more information, you can, if you'd like more information on that, Scott Maya could give that to you. And then the Science National Honor Society recently started their 24-25 campaign for student induction. On January 17th, information letters were sent to eligible students to apply for induction. Juniors and seniors who meet a minimum GPA and course enrollment requirements are eligible for induction into this nationally recognized honor society. It's led by student leaders, and they're working to develop a tutoring partnership with the middle school and initiatives to promote awareness and appreciation for advancement slash careers in the STEM field at Goffstown High School. And that's the good news coming from Goffstown High School.
Wow, thank you, Mrs. Bean. Appreciate that. Mr. Davis?
All right, so I gave everybody the sixth-grade newsletter, the news one that came out, so you can kind of see what some of our wonderful sixth graders are doing and sharing with their peers. This is a great newsletter that they put together. It, it just kind of features around kindness and kind of what I would consider the Paws' Pride of Mountain View. So, I gave a copy. I think I ran, I apologize, I did kind of run out. I also gave a, a copy of the letter from Team Aid 3. They're hosting their annual fundraiser for Liberty House. They're collecting donations up through February break. This is their 21st year of hosting this fundraiser for Liberty House. Currently, they're at about $503 in the last two weeks of collections, and they're hoping to break last year's total of $1,250. We also have Kindness Day coming up in February, and they've put out shirts that staff students can purchase, and a dollar from every sale is also going to be added to that, that fundraising total. They wanted me to point out that for each dollar donated, that equals about $20 worth of food supplied at the soup kitchens for, for people in need. Ms. Melt, who is one of the eighth-grade language arts teacher, sent me a letter. She had a young writers' contest that came across her desk, looking for student writing for a publication called Fright Club. And it was basically looking for students to write a mini-saga of 100 words or less on a creepy story. And so she did some lessons in her class around use of words to bring about things like tension, atmosphere, and suspense. She provided some exemplars, and while all the students were, had to write the mini-saga for, for class assignment, she opened it up for any students who wanted to submit their work to the contest. She had 37 students submit their work. She said on January 15th, when she arrived, she received notice that every one of the students' works were selected and will be published in, on April 7th this year for, it's called the Fright Club Anywhere But Here. Because they had so many students that were chosen, there's going to be a complimentary book given to the library, and one will be given to her, which she said that she'll gift to me to bring in so that you guys can see it when that, when that is published. Plex One has started an indoor herb garden. They're hoping to use some of those herbs in cooking, and if successful as they're hoping, they're going to offer some fresh herbs to staff. In January 10th, the fifth graders were inspired by local New Hampshire motivational speaker, Randy Pierce, who shared his journey of losing his vision and overcoming the challenges and achieving remarkable goals. So, his story tied beautifully into our PBIS monthly themes for this month and introduced students to adaptive tools that empower their daily life. And they're going to use that time that they spent with, with Mr. Pierce to kind of tie into their research about adaptive technology and how that can be used to kind of better people's lives. We have Christine Lyon, or Lyon. She's an MTSS consultant that will be coming to Mountain View on January 28th. She'll be meeting with the MTSS club, but it, or, not club, but committee. All staff are welcome, and she's going to be discussing some tools that staff can use to support struggling students in their classrooms. And the last one is, we have some teachers that are, had joined in to participate in the polar plunge. They formed a team called the Frozen View, and they'll be doing that on February 9th to help benefit Special Olympics. And that's from Mountain View.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Go ahead, Mrs. Polar.
And a few other things to mention. Glen Lake will be celebrating the winter season with a spirit week next week. It will include Hat and Crazy Hair Day, Favorite Character Day, Wacky Outfit Day, Pajama or Cozy Day, and Favorite Color or Silly Socks Day. The idea behind this is to have some fun with themes that all students can participate in as they choose. Over at Maple Avenue on January 13th, Travelin' Tom's Coffee Truck made a visit to school and crafted a number of caffeinated creations for the staff, and the coffee truck will be returning for staff on February 10th to celebrate the 100th day of school. On January 20th, the Maple PFT hosted a movie luncheon at Chunky Cinema in Manchester. Students were able to vote on the movie they wanted to watch, and the winner was Minions: Rise of Gru. Due to overwhelming demand, Chunkies actually had to move the event to one of their larger theaters, and the event was still sold out. So, a special thank you to PFT for putting that together and for everybody who came and made a sold-out performance. And over at Bartlett, the second, third, and fourth grade students are preparing to set performance goals for their NWEA tests. With guidance from their teachers, they're going to establish achievable targets that reflect their understanding and abilities. When they finish their tests, classes will celebrate by selecting a few fun activities. Additionally, students' names may be entered into a raffle at the next all-school meeting in early February for working hard on their NWEA testing. And the PTA over at Bartlett will be hosting a family game night on Saturday, February 1st from 3 to 5. They'll be offering a variety of games, from classic board games to modern escape rooms and challenges. So, they hope to see parents and families there.
Awesome. Thank you, Wendy. Wow, a lot of great things happening at our schools. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? Jack?
I was lucky enough to attend the National Honor Society induction and got to see a couple of school board members, and a school board member recognized that night. It was pretty cool to see it run by all the National Honor Society kids.
Great, thank you, Jack. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? All right, seeing none. So, we have a few presentations. The first one is from FBLA, so I'll ask you guys to come on up. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I'm just going to introduce Olivia Georgantis, and then she'll introduce her team. Welcome, Olivia and FBLA.
Thank you. So, my name's Olivia Georgantis. I am the president of the Goffstown Chapter of Future Business Leaders of America. This is Emma Vigent. She's the vice president. Claire LaRoche, she's the treasurer. Olivia Goslin, she's the historian. And then Julianne Danus is an officer assistant. We also have one more officer assistant, Rory Daniels, but she couldn't make it tonight. Outside of the Goffstown chapter of FBLA, I'm also a state officer for FBLA, which is essentially, like, kind of like a step up in the leadership world of FBLA. So, I oversee things in the Goffstown side, and then working alongside five other state officers, I oversee the multiple, multitude of chapters of FBLA in our state. So, we just have a few topics that we're going to kind of run through that have to do with things that we do here in the school and then things that we also participate in through the state. So, if you don't mind-
Yeah, Olivia, I could just ask if you guys could come up to the microphones?
Oh, yes.
I just want to make sure you have a really good voice. I think you're projecting fine, but I just want to make sure that folks at home can hear you.
So, if you don't mind, we're all going to present on a little bit of like a different aspect, just a short overview of what we kind of do on a day-to-day. Okay, so I'm going to be talking about our state leadership conference, which is pretty much what we work towards all year. This is the last conference of the year, of our school year. This year, it's March 20th to March 21st, so it's Thursday and Friday. It's an overnight event. We all stay at the Doubletree in Hilton. That's right in Manchester. So, we get there pretty early on Thursday morning, and we all sit in a, like, from every school that is able to attend, we all sit in the same room, and there's a keynote speaker. This year, it's Molly Kennedy. So, basically, they choose pretty much like a topic, like for, she was our keynote speaker two years ago, and she did a lot about like motivation and personal growth. So, they choose a topic, they share their own personal story and how they grew, and then they kind of want us to reflect on it and look at, look at our life and where we can improve. They do, there's a few speakers that normally go. Ms. Taylor, which is the state advisor of New Hampshire's chapter, she does some speaking. And then from there, we go to our competitive events. So, students can either take a test or a presentation, and there's a bunch of different ones you can take, like visual design, there's accounting, there's like cybersecurity, all that. Students are obviously open to take anyone they want. So, we spend, probably from now until about March, we spend studying, preparing the presentations, practicing, and all that. So, this is what like is the main part, I would say. So, students will go and present or take their test, and then it's a pretty big span of time, because obviously they can't have everyone doing everything at once. So, there's some free time, and then we go to dinner, and there we get to sit with students from other school and other advisors, which is a really good time to network and just like get to know other people. And then we go to a dance, which again, we're around everyone. That's pretty fun. And then the next day, we wake up, go to breakfast, obviously, and then from there, we're pretty much in the same room. We hear the results from the competitive events and the tests. So, they do first, second, for, they announce first, second, and third for every test, and then they do the awards for each chapter. So, the gold seal chapters, all the state officer projects, there's like donations, all that, we go through that. And then there's closing remarks, and that's pretty much it, but it's a pretty awesome experience. I've gone the last three years, and I have nothing but good things to say about it. It's helped me a lot. It's definitely helped me a lot with like public speaking and everything, because it's not just like you're presenting in front of a class, you're presenting in front of judges. It's a lot more professional, a lot more formal, and even the test is definitely like a lot harder, I would say, and it, I would say it's very good preparation just for anyone who wants to go into the business world. It's very eye-opening to how hard it actually is, but it's also really fun. And obviously, there's a lot of events for networking there, and overall, it's just, I think, anyone who's interested in business and can go, should go, it helps a lot.
Thank you.
I'm Julianne. I'm going to talk about Fall Leadership Workshop, which we go to every single year. We basically just go over awards and state officer projects, awards like, we do piggy bank contests and like fundraising this year for Alzheimer's Association. So, this year, usually it's at Camp Carpenter. This year, we went to UNH. We traveled on a bus with roughly 30 of our members, and we had the pleasure of listening to Ben Higgins speak as our, on his journey to entrepreneurship, where he opened up his own gym and shared his experience with that. Then we were provided meals at the UNH Dining Hall, and we broke off into breakout rooms where we learned about the Chamber of Commerce and how to better connect with our communities. We also, we were also informed more on the state officer projects and everything and how we are able to get involved. We had opportunity to ask the state officers questions, like specifics, what we can do. And then we were able to work with other schools, like separate, get divided into different groups and work across the community.
So, my name is Claire, and I'm going to talk about kind of like our day-to-day activities. So, first up, the big thing is meetings. We try and have a meeting like at least every other week, if not more. It kind of depends. If we have like an event coming up, we might need more meetings to meet with our members. But overall, so meetings are big things. We talk about like upcoming events or maybe projects that we're going to be working on or just like new opportunities that our members can participate in. And then second thing is we do a lot of volunteering, or at least we try to. Like most recently, we all went to the Make-A-Wish holiday party for actually the second year in a row, and basically we go up to Concorde, to the Grupponi Center, and all the Wish Kids come in, and they do crafts and like photo booths, and we all just kind of help out wherever we can. I can honestly say like that's one of the best days of the year. It's so much fun to just help them. And then we've also done bell ringing for the Salvation Army just to raise money for them. And we've done the NHS trash cleanup, which Ms. Bean mentioned a bit, and we're hoping to participate in that again this year, obviously. And then we also do a lot of bulletin boards throughout the school. Like, we actually have one outside of the tech wing right now, just to kind of talk about what FBLA is and like what we do. And that's kind of a common theme throughout the ones that we do. So, if there's a project that we're working on, we want to spread information about it or spread awareness, we'll make a bulletin board. If we want to like encourage membership, we can make a bulletin board, and they kind of just are sprouted among the school just to inform people. And then the last thing is like fundraising. So, again, for the Salvation Army, we've done fundraising. We've also raised money for the New Hampshire Food Bank a couple of years ago, and then this year, most recently, was the Alzheimer's Foundation, which we then bring those funds to FLW to compete, so. So, yeah.
And closing off, my name is Olivia, and we're going to close off with like our most upcoming event that we have going on. So, it's called FBLA Week, and this is a nationwide event where all chapters across the nation plan many activities for each day of the week to help boost membership and publicize their success. So, last year, we were quite involved with FBLA Week. We made infographics to hang around town to spread awareness about all the state officer projects. We held information sessions about the club for new members, current members, anyone who really wants to join, get to know more about the club. We had several guest speakers come in to talk, whether it was the morning or the afternoon or during the day. They ranged from employees at Brady Sullivan Properties to employees at Ace Hardware. We held a teacher appreciation breakfast. We made them cards. We wore our business attire to school and along with our FBLA shirts. And we also celebrated our club's success inside and outside of school, and that included getting a proclamation signed by past Governor Sununu and from celebrating our previous Gold Seer Chapter Award. And so, this year, we also want to stay really involved with FBLA Week, get as many points as we can to hopefully win something at our state leadership conference. So, it starts on February ninth and ends on February fifteenth. And so, it starts off with Service Sunday, where we'll be fundraising for the Alzheimer's Foundation, and we'll be wearing purple. We'll have Marketing Monday next, and we'll create a recruitment video and wear our business attire. CTE Tuesday is where we'll interview MST students, and we'll have a social event along with a guest speaker. We have Y Wednesday, where we'll be featured in the grizzly buzz. We'll have a school store display, and we'll also have a regular club meeting. And then on Thankful Thursday, we'll have our teacher appreciation breakfast, which we do every year. We'll have, we'll make them cards and have another social event. On Fundraising Friday, we'll have a school store Valentine's sort of event, Valentine's theme, maybe hand out some candy, just celebrate Valentine's Day. And then on Success Saturday, we'll share our chapter's success stories, and we will get another proclamation signed. So, that's what FBLA Week will hold.
Just want to add a few more things. Another big part of FBLA is the Goffstown High School School Store. The school store is located just across from the gym, near the tech wing, where a student-led in charge of like purchasing and selling merchandise related to Goffstown High School. Last year, we kind of revamped the store. We actually got a POS system that was put in place for the school store that we can now process credit card transactions, whereas previously, we could only accept cash. We've had a little bit of a halted start to the school system just due to like some accounting stuff, but we're back up and running. We actually just ordered some new merchandise that should be here in the next week or so, and will be out ready to sell it at sporting events and also sporadically throughout the day. We found that in-store, in-school sales are our prominent selling point. At athletic events, that's where we really do very well, and it's a, it's a lot of fun for us too to go and set up, sell, you know, learn how to use a POS system, learn how to process transactions, a little bit of insight into accounting, things like that. Another thing, what else did I want to say? State officer projects, if you don't know what that is, I know they mentioned it, but basically, all the state officers have these like initiative projects that we do. Mine is specifically called Defeat the Darkness, and it's working towards like drug-free initiatives in the state. There, they range from like environmental initiatives to business initiatives. It's kind of like a wide range, and it gives you a place to outlet your specific like need, and all the members throughout the state participate in these so projects. I think that kind of gives you a good overview on what it is like at Goffstown High School FBLA. Thank you so much for having us. Hope you guys have a great night. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments for these ladies?
I would just have one.
Go ahead.
Can you introduce your?
Oh, yes, and our advisor is, sorry. Our advisor is Ms. Atkinson. She teaches history and marketing at Goffstown, and this is like her first year being our advisor, kind of sort of, but she kind of learned the ropes last year.
Nice. Well, go ahead, Rhonda.
I was just going to say that you present every year. I always look forward to it, and I'm so tired when I hear all the things. And I'm just wondering if you ever had time for schoolwork.
It's really, it's not as much as, we do have, it is also a good skill-to-learn time management to juggle these tasks.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate you guys coming out every year and talking to us. Good luck. See you. All right, so the next is the Glen Lake Role Model Proposal, Mrs. Stoyl.
So, we're going to welcome Mrs. Stoyl and Mrs. Donovan are going to come up. Mr. Gross, do you want to do a quick summary to kick this off a little bit? I know you talked about it briefly with A&amp;F.
This is so quick that if I gave the quick summary, it could give away the whole thing.
Proposals in your packet.
Yeah, I'll fill in Catherine if there's, I do think it would just.
Mrs. Stoyl and Mrs. Donovan, welcome.
Oh, that was a tough act to follow. Very impressive group of young women, so now getting down to the other end of the spectrum. With the tiniest. So, we have had a struggle in filling role model positions, especially for three-year-olds since COVID. We're not alone in that. Other districts in the area. And our proposal, one thing we've gotten for feedback is that parents would like the opportunity to have that fourth preschool day. So, our proposal is to change that three-year-old preschool role model attendance from three-half days per week to four-half days per week, and four-year-olds are already on that schedule. So, like I said, we haven't had a full contingent of three-year-old role models since 2020. Parents have requested it, and educationally, this would provide for a consistency of class size and community. It's not, oh, this one isn't here today, and they're here the next day, and you're trying to make sure they all get those essential experiences, that the classes are cohesive whole. And that is better for consistency of instruction. We did do a survey, and Mrs. Donovan did this survey along with Mrs. Brades, and looked to other district administrators and other facilitators to find out what other school districts offer. So, there is a page in your packet there. I can go through it, but what I will say, the gist of it is, there's a variety of different things, some as low as two days, but there's definitely a trend toward offering four days, and some are even offering five. So, we're in good company in finding that that four-day model might be more attractive to families in 2025. So, what is the potential impact? An increased number of role models attending consistently would improve consistency of instruction and community, as I had mentioned, and would provide a better educational experience for all of the students in the class. When, if you're the child that isn't there on Mondays and you're getting caught up on Tuesday, it impacts you, but it also impacts the other kids who are now waiting for all of that to happen. So, so this is just better for everyone. Teachers would be able to plan and instruct more efficiently and effectively. Role model students do not require additional paraprofessional support, so this would not impact staffing. And we would see an increase, and this is projected, but if you looked at the nine role model students we currently have, the increase in tuition for that fourth day would be an increase of $5,850 per year. If we were able, however, to get back to our full contingent of twenty to twenty-four three-year-old role models, that would be an extra eleven to fifteen students at 2,600 per year for an additional 28,600 to 39,000 over that 5,850. And so, a total potential increase could be up to $44,850. That said, the real reason behind this is, I mean, that's nice. It's always, it's always great to be bringing money in, but, but it's better for kids. So, that's our presentation.
Do you have questions? Anybody? Go ahead, Dan.
What would have been the reason for only three days in the beginning?
So, we had, three-year-olds were more traditionally going, fewer days a week back in the past, and we used our Mondays, they were called Super Mondays, and we would have just identified students on those days, and we could provide some targeted pre-teaching, and we also had time to have a dedicated motor experience and speech and language experience for those kids. But as our numbers of identified students have increased and their needs have increased, having those separate experiences apart from required therapy sessions has become more difficult to do. We're not getting the bang for the buck that we used to by having those kids on a Monday on their own. We really, and really having that, that presence of role models consistently through is, right now, going to be a better model for instruction.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anything else? Anyone else? Comments, questions? Go ahead, Jenny.
I think the role model program is like very important for, for the younger kiddos, and to have that be consistent is even more important. So, I would be in favor of this very strongly.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else?
I just have a follow-up.
Oh, yeah, okay, hang on. Lauren, and then Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Stoyl, my, we, my younger kids didn't have the pleasure of going through, so I'm a little unfamiliar with the half-day program. So, the, the teachers aren't going to be losing any prep time to this because the, they're already on their four-day, four-year-old schedule. They're just kind of increasing the student size, but it's, it's not the kiddos that would require your parents, as you said, so. Okay, just fill in the room, but not taking more hours from like planning or prep.
Right, right, yep. And the teacher's perspective is that our teachers want this. Like, I can speak from the four years prior. It's hard. You're like, okay, I'm going to do a literacy on this day, I'm going to do math, like making that decision about what a kid is going to miss, or they come back and they're like, we had a scavenger hunt yesterday, and I'm like, ah, you know, it's just, the consistency for planning will help students too.
Great. I assume that you would be good with the staff, but I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Sorry. Are you all set, Lauren?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
So, if we were to approve this, how soon would you be able to start?
We would, registration is beginning as soon as we can get ourselves together to do it. So, we just wanted to know what we're asking people to register for. We're ready to start registering kids for next year right away. So, so it would start in the fall.
In the fall, not even in the spring? Not in a few weeks or a month?
No, I mean, if, if there was a desire to have us consider that, we could, we generally have parents sign contracts in the, in the late winter, early spring for the following year, but I, you know, that could be something I could sell to some three-day parents.
The reason I mention that is because at A&amp;F, when we were talking about this, Scott was mentioning that there were some parents that if the opportunity would arise, they would jump at it. And I'm just wondering if they would amend their, their current contract and jump at it now, but I also am aware that there needs to be potentially some planning and some other items behind the scene that would have to be done, and that's really where the question is coming from. What is the reasonableness of having the opportunity to begin a four-day?
I think, and I don't know what you, your thoughts are, I think it would be doable. Yeah, I think it would be doable. This, it's not going to impact busing, parents are bringing. The only thing I would, you know, some of them, families have already made arrangements like for whatever they're doing on that other day, so, but offering it as an option, I think some people would jump at it. I wouldn't want to require it of families, but I think as an option, that, that might be, that might be doable.
Right, and that's what Brian and I were talking about, was to decide if you guys needed a decision tonight.
The, I would say as far as registration for next year goes, the sooner the better. They are rolling out, and I think it's at some point this week, registration for other grade levels. I don't feel compelled to put things out on the same day for preschool, but, but as close to it as we can, as families are trying to coordinate schedules is helpful.
Right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
One final follow-up, and this would be for administration. Have you guys thought about this particular aspect that I mentioned, and if, do you need more time to think whether that's a good idea or not?
So, we've had two meetings on this, and when we met, we didn't talk about this starting more, more soon. We talked about this for the fall. If Mrs. Stoyl and Mrs. Donovan are open to this, if the board is in support of the, of the proposed change to the preschool program, we could potentially explore, you know, with possibilities to start this spring as available. So, I don't know that I would want to make it really formal, but if, kind of informally, if they were able to say to some parents, we could offer a fourth day, if that's something you're interested in, but with the full kind of formal rollout for the fall. So, it could be, if there was a motion of that nature, I think if Kathy's open to it and they think that they could move sooner rather than later.
It's a small amount, as you, as you know, we're talking nine kids right now. We'd like it to be more next year, but for now, it really, so it's not a, a huge number. They're already provided for in the classroom. Their name cards are up and their everything, so it's really, I think it would be doable for, go ahead.
I would just share that this is not about the revenue for me. So, this is about the continuity of programming for children. This is about teachers having, you know, knowing what kids are going to be in front of them every day. I think this is good for teaching and learning. If this happens to generate a little bit of revenue, great, but that's not the reason for this. So, I know Kathy and her proposal kind of went heavy on the numbers, and great, we're happy to take the extra revenue, but this is really about teaching and learning.
Anyone? Go ahead, Rhonda.
I was just wondering if it would make sense to just propose this change for the fall so they can begin immediately on their registration, and then if there needs to be more conversation, I guess I look to, you know, administration and at both school and the SAU, that could that be a different add-on? And I'm just trying to make this easy so they can move forward on what they had planned on moving.
I think the easiest way might be if the board is in support of the program for next school year. So, if there aren't any more questions about that, I think if you had a motion, that would be to approve the preschool proposed changes to the tuition program for the fall of the 2025 school year with flexibility given to administration to begin role model increases in days during the remainder of FY25 as they're able to.
So, I got to say so. Yeah, well, Mrs. Moore was typing.
I know, I saw her typing. So, Jack.
If you're moving it, I'll second it.
Jack, motion. Dan, second.
With, with one little, because you said for twenty-five, beginning in twenty-five for the twenty-six school year.
I was trying to say.
Yeah, twenty-five to twenty-six. Yes.
And this year.
Winter-spring of FY25, which is this school year, and then next fall, which is FY26.
Right, yes, yes. That would be the intent.
Yeah, that would be the intent.
All right, so I have a motion by Jack, and a second by Dan. Any other discussion? No? All right, all those in favor say aye. Teachers, students, says yes, oppose, abstaining, re-inanimate. Keep us posted.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you for coming, yes. All right, so the next is the GHS Program of Studies presentation. That's great. Wendy?
So, at this time, I'd like to welcome Melissa Mizony, our Director of School Counseling. Many of you haven't had the pleasure of meeting Melissa, so we're excited to have her here this evening. In joining her will be Kurt McDermott, our Curriculum Coordinator from the high school.
Welcome, guys.
So, just to give you a little bit of background, at CNE, we actually had a meeting that was canceled, where we were supposed to do this back in December because of some inclement weather. So, this came to our last CNE meeting, and they are coming today to bring some changes to the program of studies. And also, in your packet, and I also sent this via email a little over a week ago so that everybody has, you know, enough time to be able to go through things, there's also a proposal. enough time to be able to go through things, there's also a proposal for a new course addition as well. We normally bring new courses in, um, September for the following year. So, we did this as a separate sheet in your packet, just to make sure that we could draw attention to that for all of the board members as well. So, at this point, I'm going to pass it over to Melissa, that will talk about the changes.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, so being my first year as the School Counseling Director, I am doing this for the first time. Um, I'll tell you a little bit about kind of the process that we went through. Um, if you have any questions or you'd like me to slow down, please let me know. Um, so really, I talked with each department about their courses. There weren't very many, um, big changes, some small wording things. Um, like in Artis and Crafts, they're no longer using a particular material, so taking out a wording for a material that's no longer being used. Um, in one of the PE classes, um, they can't guarantee, I think it was table tennis, so just changing some small wording pieces like that for some of the courses. Um, some of the, um, teachers wanted to rewrite, thinking that, um, um, some pieces, for example, in the, um, on page two, um, line six of the marketing course, um, the course description was written by a prior teacher. Um, she's teaching the course for, um, the Running Start course, um, and teaching the same material, but just didn't feel that the course description, um, was reflective of what has been taught. So, she updated that a little bit to make a little bit more sense. Um, so some of those changes, um, have, um, more wording to go with them, but, um, that is a small update. Um, one of the updates on the front page, sorry to jump back, is, um, some of the teachers in art and technology wanted to add honors, um, the honors designation to their courses, feeling that, um, there is a workload that already exists. Students are already doing, um, a lot of work in those classes, but the title wasn't reflecting that, um, at the honors level. So, um, there were some pieces in there of adding honors to a few of the art courses. Um, in a conversation that we had this morning, um, with Kim McCann, Betsy, and, um, Ashley Fornier, the lead teacher for art, um, we were talking more about, um, proposing honors for the secondary courses. Um, so Ceramics Two, Drawing and Painting, um, and keeping that Ceramics One, I know it is on your sheet, but keeping that at the open level. Um, so having that first intro into Ceramics at the open level, um, and then the other secondary courses being that honors proposal that we're making. I, I don't know if anyone wants me to go through all of the pieces of this packet, but please let me know if there are any questions.
Any questions, comments, anybody from CNE that was a part of the presentation? Want to add anything?
Um, CNE did, um, go over all of this with, um, Melissa and Kurt, and we did vote to recommend to, um, present this to the board for recommendation tonight.
Wendy, did you want to add?
Yeah, one of the things I also wanted to mention that Melissa discussed at CNE is, um, there was a course change name, um, because Manchester School of Technology has had some changes in their course description. So, when that happens, we make changes in our handbook to match that. So, they have a new course name of Landscape Porticulture Construction, um, that used to be Green Technology. So, little changes like that as either the Manchester School, um, of Technology or its MCC changes what their courses, um, are their named or wording that goes along with it, we just keep succinct with those changes in our handbook as well.
All right, go ahead, Shane, and Lauren.
Um, I just want to say, thank you for your work on this, and how tedious it is to update a Program of Studies. Um, it's a lot of work and a lot of small tweaks. Um, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the changes to the Goss Town High School Program of Studies as presented.
Thank you, Shane. I have a second, and then I'll, Lauren, and you can go. Do I have a second? By Jenny. All right, Lauren?
Oh, um, thank you. I, just being on CNE, um, when I was going through this, again, being the newer member as well, it, like, you look at it this also for the members of the public, says some courses are no longer offered, and at, at first glance, it was like, well, are we taking all of these out of the, uh, catalog? And it, there was, just to, um, um, emphasize that there are no courses that actually came out, right? This is just an update of things that were already
Correct, yeah.
because it says like, no longer art, art is, commercial art and design, it's not, you guys didn't take those out.
No, I, that was a, um, change that was approved in a prior school year. That line, um, for the visual arts pathway, um, if you open to page eighteen of the Program of Studies, it's a graphic. So, the graphic was just not updated, and I updated the graphic, but we aren't actually changing any of those courses this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. So, I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any other discussion?
One final thought.
Yeah, go ahead, Lynn.
Um, I know the board discussed a lot going away from class rank to the Latin honor system. That was reflected as well in the Program of Studies. So, I know we've already talked about that, but I wanted to make sure you know that those changes did happen.
Awesome, thank you, Wendy. Go ahead, Dan.
That was actually my question, um, looking on page, let me go to the bottom, ten.
Ten.
It doesn't talk about any potential Latin honors for the current class of twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-seven that we then talked about potentially. Has it been determined that we're not going to do that?
Uh, the only information I had with the Latin honors was starting with the class of twenty, twenty-eight and beyond.
So, for this, because this document will not go, it is in effect for next year's Program of Studies, so the wording isn't in it backtracking, but yes, we had talked about the designation this year, that even though we were still keeping class rank, that we would still have those other designations. We talked about that when Kurt came.
Right.
So, yes. However, because this is officially starting for next year, they put the wording in starting at next, the start of next year, if that makes sense.
But we're planning to start the designations
Correct.
with this graduating class
Correct.
in June, this coming June.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you good, Dan?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't see that reflected in the words of any potential Latin honors for the class of twenty-six or twenty-seven. Am I missing something someplace? On page ten, could it be someplace else?
Um, page ten is where I indicated the Latin honors for the class of twenty, twenty-eight and beyond.
Right.
Um, I don't believe I had any other information.
Okay, so, can we address it now?
Yes.
Yeah. We're adding it for twenty, twenty-six. Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe so. Twenty-five, six, or at least twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Yes.
Go left.
Dan's right. Yes, that was what we discussed at the board and was approved at the board.
Can, can I just ask?
Go ahead, Rhett.
Was the question, I, I recall us having a conversation about be, it being an option for the students. It didn't officially take place till twenty, twenty-eight, but
Yes.
starting
It, it, they would have both.
They would have both.
It's right, that the, the class ranking for class twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven does not go away.
Right.
But they also get the opportunity of having a Latin honor
Yes.
as well for those three classes.
We're doubling up.
We're doubling up, exactly.
That's what I recall.
Yes.
It's just, I don't know what the language changed.
On the top page, number three, it does have that.
On page ten?
It says, see, that it goes, it has the Latin honor.
But that was just the twenty-eight. It didn't include
Twenty, twenty-five to twenty, twenty-seven.
That was for class ranking
Right.
to only say
Include Latin honors.
it does not include twenty, twenty-eight.
Class of twenty, twenty-eight and beyond, yes.
The paperwork that you sent us to read on page ten doesn't have that. And I don't know, so that we can approve this tonight, what is the wording that we think is going to be used on page ten to reflect what we had talked about? Would it be Latin honors? Where you want to put the options and stuff in there? Oh, you know, I, I have, I'm actually looking at page ten because I have it on my computer. Um, you guys don't have that
We're looking at what they gave us. Wendy has it.
I think, I, I wonder if a simple statement that students in the class of twenty, twenty-six and twenty, twenty-seven will also be acknowledged with Latin honors.
Works for me.
That's it, okay.
Perfect.
Yep, it's in the minutes, and if those who did the motion in the second would
And include that.
include the amendment
Yep.
it would be appreciated.
I will amend my motion to include the changes regarding the Latin honors statement for the class of twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Thank you, Shane.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yes. Jenny seconds the
Yep.
amendment. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other further discussion? All right, CNE, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, re-anatomous. Teachers and students said yes. All right, thank you so much.
And to go along with that
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McDermott, who's going to talk about logic and rhetoric.
Yeah, so we're specifically pulling this class out, excuse me, as an attempt to get in front of the proposed ed-306 changes that, for all intents and purposes, look like they're going to be approved. Um, those grad requirements would apply to current seventh-grade students. So, this proposed class would essentially be a full-year research and development class. Um, we have taught pieces of a logic and rhetoric class in multiple, multiple departments. This would be an attempt to bring them together and have a coherent, concise, uh, product for students. Um, it could talk, touch on, um, Boolean and binary logic, syllogisms and inductive reasoning, logical fallacies and critical thinking, programming, um, and of course, speaking and debating. So, we have pieces of those things, obviously, in, in different parts of the, um, school, and even in, like, speech and debate, for example, um, in the clubs that we offer. So, what we're proposing is, um, a pass-fail class to encourage students to take the class, to offer feedback, to kind of give us help with that R&amp;D, uh, for the year, with no penalty to their GPA. Um, we really want to get the broadest group possible in there to offer feedback and to try and assemble the best product that we can and jettison the rest. Um, this would be, uh, the, the timeline here would be, uh, one-year class. We would research, figure out what works best, and then come with a proposal for a permanent class to CNE next year. So, those are the basics, yeah.
Got you.
Which department would this fall in? Would it be English or Social Studies or some
We're not getting a lot of guidance on that from the state.
Some version of that.
Yes.
Some version.
Humanities, if you will. Yep. Um, most likely, yeah, humanities.
Yeah.
Social studies, it's, I, if you look at it, it's, I guess the arguing, argument could be made that it's coming out of an English credit. Um, but we know that the syllogism that they're doing in geometry, down the hall, they're doing very similar things in an English class. So, this would be an attempt to actually kind of formalize those connections and ideally offer a, a feeder program to some of the elective courses that we offer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Jenny?
It was presented to CNE, and, um, we recommend the board, um, to recommend this.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Karen.
To approve the proposal for the, um, addendum to the twenty-five, twenty-six Program of Studies for Pilot Logic and Rhetoric Course.
Thank you. Do I have a second? By Rhett. Any other discussion, Rhett? Did you have something you wanted to say, or were you going to do the motion?
Oh, I was going to do the motion, but that's fine.
Any other discussion? CNE, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, re-anatomous. Teachers, students said yes. All right.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your time.
I'm staying up here, my apologies.
We're also going to have, uh, Josh Lewis from Mountain View join Kurt, and they're going to talk a little bit about Portrait of a Graduate. I did hand out, um, with your packet, a nice color copy of, um, the proposed visual for Portrait of a Graduate, um, just because I know the, the paper copies that you had, it wasn't in color, and just wanted you to see what it looks like. So, Josh and Kurt, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Um, so the idea behind Portrait of a Graduate, it is a requirement imposed on us in NEASC accreditation, but we're really trying to make it a meaningful process that involves the entire district and that unites us under some common, or goals. Um, and I, the, the research that I did, I found stuff going back to twenty-twenty, but you were saying it, it
Before that.
predates that, so it's been a long time coming.
Yeah, the process actually kind of got started because of our NEASC accreditation at Mountain View. Uh, but as Kurt said, it is a district-wide kind of unified effort that's going into this process. So, Portrait of a Graduate can be defined as a vision statement that schools and districts create with input from various stakeholders in the community. Uh, and what it does is provides us with this framework that'll basically outlines, you know, traits, attributes, transferable skills, competencies, um, basically all the things that a community or the district kind of, um, feel are important for their graduates.
And these are some examples from, um, nearby school districts, uh, the graphics that they offer, as well as some of the pieces, some of the components that they're looking for. Um, this is an attempt and an opportunity to, when we think about things like, um, teachers' own personal goals, it's a way to kind of give them a starting point. Um, and it's a way to start thinking about some of those, uh, soft skills that we don't necessarily have outlined in a class, but that we're trying to build towards.
So, work that's been done so far, we've had staff that have attended various trainings through NEASC. Uh, we've collected samples from other districts, as you saw, if you in the prior slide, um, to kind of analyze those. MVMS and GHS mission statements, uh, were analyzed and then merged, be able to come up with the resulting information and language that we put in our Portrait of a Graduate poster that you'll see momentarily. Um, that language got further revised once we started getting people with diverse teaching experiences involved, and letting them kind of hash it out a little bit and adding and subtracting things as they, as they saw fit. And then we brought that forth to the staff for feedback, and that was done district-wide from U-Boston all the way through K through twelve in Goss Town. Um, and then multiple rounds of revisions, uh, you can see the, some examples on there, um, of all the different types of iterations that we had from this poster and revisions that were made.
They were just shy of like a million comments on this stuff. But anytime you, you, you put out syntax to a, a group, um, but I think it's a, I think it's a real strength because it means people care about this, and they care about the language that's there. And it's been put in front of all the eyes in the district. And so, this is, this is the document. Um, we can walk you through it. I don't want to read to you necessarily, but the four, um, components, critical thinking, connection, citizenship, and community. And like I said, everyone in the district, as far as I know, has had eyes on this and has contributed to it.
Another piece to the poster, too, that if you can't really tell per se, is that the, the kind of darker relief in the background are all the different, um, mascots from each of the different buildings in the district as well?
And specific kudos to Ashley Fornier, who has done every iteration of this graphic except the horrible one that I initially sent her, so I do want to give her credit. She's done a ton.
All right.
Sure. Uh, so what's next? We, um, we have to come up with a standard measure. How do we want to analyze, or what data do we want to analyze, and how are we going to do that? Um, to, in order to basically ensure that we achieve those desired outcomes that we're looking for. Um, it's important to remember, this is not just a poster on the wall, right? This is something that we are, um, endeavoring to take on in stride, too, from K through twelve. Um, and that kind of permeates into various other areas of our, of our job, which includes coming up with Portrait of a Graduate language to add to district goals, as well as individual teacher goals and their three-year cycles, um, and then adopt a more formal review process with, following those NEASC guidelines.
And we've had a couple of initiatives with, um, multiple schools in the district. This gives us another touch point for vertical alignment as well.
All right, does anybody have any questions, comments? Go ahead, Dan.
Now, I just want to summarize it in my non-educational wording, and tell me if I'm close. This is kind of like an educational document for the faculty and the staff to put together the program and everything we do to prepare our students for when they graduate high school. It's not a course.
And the desired outcome.
It's a desired outcome, and so when we look at a course, we look at our Portrait of a Graduate and say, are we following these edicts?
Mm-hmm.
And is it going to be measurable to make it happen?
Yeah, essentially.
Okay.
I guess the nearest I guess the nearest analog might be like a mission statement.
I was looking at this to see if that's where we were going.
If I could just add, when Mr. McDermott started, he talked about that this is a requirement of NEAS, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Both Goffstown High School and Mountain View Middle School are both accredited. Our area agreement requires both institutions to be accredited and this is one of their requirements. So is it good to have kind of a one-page infographic? Sure, sure. I think it brings us together, I think it aligns, you know, we always want kindergarten teachers to be thinking about graduation outcomes. We want elementary teachers to think about what our kids look like when they graduate. So everyone having a bigger picture, kind of eye on the prize of the skills and abilities that we're looking for in our graduates is a good thing. But this really, why are we doing this? Because NEAS requires us to.
Go ahead Rhonda.
I brought up during the curriculum committee meeting that this is also good for us as we review our own mission and understanding how long it took us to actually confirm that mission statement, that we can maybe take a look at this and see how, it's almost, it's easier for us now because we've got something that's concrete that's applied to all schools.
Any other questions, comments? So we need a motion.
I'll say something.
Go ahead.
I think that this is great, I think this is, you know, a great start to getting our document going for the requirement, but I think to Dan's comment around like not just focusing on the academic portion, we had a lot of conversation in the fall and through our budget process in regards to different positions within the schools and the importance of them or the need for them. And I think that this really just goes to show that it's not always about the academic portion of schools, that kids throughout their school day are dealing with a lot of different things and everybody within the building, all of the staff, all of the pares and every employee of the district has a role that they are supporting this. And so it's not just about, you know, your math and your reading, but you know, some of the social emotional learning to get to the community and the citizenship and the connection piece is all extremely important and really comes full circle. So I think that this is a lot of, you know, great thought that went into this and I like what the end result is and I think it is something that we want all of our students to encompass, so, well done.
Thank you Caroline. Go ahead Jenny.
We had a very busy CNE meeting, as you can tell. And I sound like a broken record saying that we did review this and we bring forth a recommendation from the committee to the board for recommendation tonight.
Thanks Jenny. Go ahead Scott.
You know, as I read this and as I listen to the FBLA presentation, it really resonated with me that everything that's on here was really talked about.
You just saw it.
You saw it. You witnessed, you witnessed the Goffstown education and the outcome in that presentation. So, and I couldn't agree with you more with what you said about it is more than just, you know, the reading and the writing and the arithmetic, it's the whole person.
And it's very hard to see on this, but in the bigger one, you can see every mascot of every school on here and it's really cute.
Yeah, that is cool to see that.
We'll make sure when it's approved that it's nice on the, you know, digital copy on our website and things like that, it will stand out.
Yeah, definitely. So do we have a motion? Go ahead Rhonda.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the Portrait of the Graduate as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? All right.
Just, just a comment.
Oh, go ahead Dan. Yeah?
I'm not even sure, as I said, from my point of view, I don't really know what I'm voting on because I don't understand it.
So this document essentially provides the roadmap for what we want a Goffstown graduate to be as a person.
This is so high level. I mean, it's just so high level.
But these are essentially the outcomes we want. Once a kid reaches the level they're going to graduate, we want them to be able to think critically, make connections, be a productive citizen, and be involved in their community.
That?
We basically just want a well-rounded human that graduates from our system.
Well said Shane.
And you have to have some kind of a visual to represent that.
Yeah.
Heather? Yeah, go ahead Jenny.
There's, when the NEAS and C comes, Dan, they ask for like a lot of different information and this is one that they're requiring. So the group has, has like put all of the information together and we need a portrait of a graduate part of the information that they're requiring. So they put this together for the piece of information, the paper for the NEAS and C evaluation. So this is that paper that they're requiring.
So I, if I can ask just a, so what we're approving is that one slot?
Yes.
Right.
This one pager, that's it. It's just this one pager.
All right, it was all the other stuff that was explaining it. That was kind of throwing me off.
Yeah, it's just the poster.
Yeah, it's just the poster.
Okay.
The graphic really.
Are you good Dan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, C and N, all those in favor say aye. Teachers, student, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you guys, this is very.
Thank you for all the work that went into this.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you Mrs. Kohler for pushing this one over the finish line.
All right, all the staff, staff worked really hard on this and when Kurt said a million suggestions, he wasn't kidding. We brought it to all the staff meetings and received a lot of feedback and them trying to put that all in what made sense, so it was a tremendous amount of work, so thank you to Kurt and Josh and the staff, all the work on this.
Have a good night.
Thanks too.
All right, so we're done with our presentations, so we're going to move on to our meeting. The first is approving January 6 meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to read it, anybody see anything? Any motion?
Motion to approve the January 6 2025 minutes as presented.
Thank you Caroline, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. Any further discussion? Okay, C and N, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous, yes on everything. Ooh, wow. Okay.
Thank you, I was going to ask.
That was bright. All right, committee reports, manifest and vouchers. Scott, Dan?
Or Dan for the moment, thank you. A and F met this evening, we had a very lengthy meeting of about seven minutes. Of that was the manifest, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's manifest in the amount of, you ready? Four million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty-six cents. It includes three pay periods and I'm going to ask our business administrator, Mr. Scott Gross, to explain it.
Hang on, I just need a second. So Dan motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Caroline. All right, go ahead Scott.
All right, so as Dan alluded to, almost reaped.
Yes.
I don't think we have.
We have the manifest? You don't have the manifest?
No, I thought it was just me, so I.
I think it's in our packet. Heather?
Do you want me to make copies of it? I can.
Yes, please.
Yeah, because everybody needs.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm just going to read through it. So your payroll taxes and benefits represented almost 3.2 million of the manifest, which was a little over 4.4. And that included payments to health trusts for health and dental premiums totaling a little over 723,000 and almost 448,000 to the New Hampshire retirement system. So this was one of those manifests where you have payrolls, retirement contributions, health insurance, all in one, so that's why that was high. Your special ed activity totaled a little over $300,000. And these are for a myriad of different special ed providers, including out-of-district placements as well as special education contracted services. And I'll read off for transparency purposes those vendors. Bedford School District, Speakeasy Speech Therapy, Boothby Services, Crest Collaborative, Durham School Services, which is our, which is our transportation provider for special ed, Emergents Healthcare, The Home for Little Wanderers, Justice Resource, Lighthouse School, Literacy Learning Solutions, Spalding Academy, Regional Services, Seven Hills, and Strong Foundation. So these represent, again, a combination of out-of-district placements as well as contracted services for things as speech, et cetera. Our general expenses totaled a little over $806,000. Noteworthy on here, I'll just go over some of them. Amazon was books, equipment and supplies, 10,800 and change. Anderson Solar Films, 42,000 and change for window protective film. Consolidated Communications, almost 13,000 for telephone fees and equipment, and part of that is that telephone project that we're working on, replacement project. You'll note that we had a pretty high propane bill because it was a lot of months, it was two, almost two months worth of billing that added up to that, so that was almost $72,000. Goffstown Truck Center, we paid 32,675 and that was both co-curricular and athletic transportation predominantly. You'll note that we paid Huddle, and that is that athletics, video, and IT software license for $9,400. That has been talked about at different meetings with regard to the data privacy agreement, so we're hoping to resolve that one with Huddle, but if not, you won't be seeing this one on the manifest next year.
There goes the technology report.
Sorry Dan. Manchester School District, little over $28,000. That's a cost share for transportation, specifically that's homeless transportation. There is a federal law in the McKinney-Vento Act, which basically, school districts are required to provide transportation to homeless students and we do share this expense with some districts that surround us, in this case, it's Manchester. Again, try to keep the costs reduced. Princeton Health, we spent almost $6,800 for MVMS books, those were health books. Primex was another big one, $188,000, that was your workers' compensation premium for the district for the entire year. St. On Septic, I know this was one that Brady was looking into, that was 67,35, and that was for pumping out the septic, the leach fields. Brady, not even a smile, I mean just dead man. At Mountain View Middle School. This one here, the Town of Goffstown, 113,570, that is for over two fiscal years, so we recently got the, both the bill for FY, the second part of FY '24 and FY '25, and we paid those. About 55,000 of that 113,570 was last year's FY '24 encumbered funds that we paid out. It also included some police details from the fall and winter. We do have police details for some of our athletic events, both outside and inside. And then WB Mason Paper, as well as we spent a little over $25,000 for performance, food service for food and commodities.
All right, thank you Scott. Any questions or comments? Go ahead Jared.
Just a generalized statement Scott, I want to make sure I'm reading this right. So we had roughly $110,000 that has accumulated, but all of those individually did not exceed $5,000 and therefore not showing up on this.
That's exactly it. Yep.
So just for anybody in public that's saying, hey, wait a minute, why is there not $110,000 missing? It's accounted for, it's just not on the summary sheet.
Right.
Thank you Jared. Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous, everybody said yes.
I just wanted to add for the record, to your point, is that the A and F committee members do get the entire check registers and they have the opportunity to look at any and all transactions that are made. We typically don't share those with the full board, that's why you do have a subcommittee for one, and there are some, there are initials sometimes for special ed payments, et cetera, that the A and F committee folks might see, they wouldn't know anything, but they would, they could see that. But if, but the board doesn't, we don't share those. But again, you see here that 98% of all funds that are spent are on this summary sheet.
Thank you Scott. All right, moving on Scott, to the Goffstown Babe Ruth.
Yeah, so I wanted, Jared knows about this, as I believe you got the same phone call, right? So I received a phone call from someone I've spoken to in the past about a few other issues. Her name is Vanessa Hay, she's very active in Goffstown baseball community, all the way from Goffstown Junior Baseball, and now I think her children play in Goffstown Babe Ruth and perhaps even on our teams here at either middle school or the high school. And Vanessa was asking about why Goffstown, the town and the school district that has a very storied baseball history, does not have a 90-foot baseball diamond? And I did share with her that is accurate, right now, and for the folks who might not know, around this table or in the audience, is that the town of Goffstown and the school district do not own a 90-foot baseball diamond. Baseball that requires a 90-foot baseball diamond is played on two fields, Lyons Field and Allard Park. Both of those are private entities. The Lyons Club has allowed the school district to use that field for a couple of decades at least, and the Allard family has been extremely generous and our JV team plays there. The concern from Vanessa and others in the community is that, is the what-if. What if either the Lyons Club or the Allard family decides that they want to do something else with their property or they no longer want to allow Goffstown baseball program to use those fields? What would we do? And quite honestly, I have to discuss that with our athletic director in terms of a Plan B, but sometimes that would be road games or trying to get time at St. Anselm or things like that, but right now, we don't own the field. Prior to COVID, Rick Wilhelm, our Parks and Rec Director, did talk to me about, you know, would the school district be interested in developing a field for, I think it was like 900 to a million dollars? I think I talked to the A and F committee about it at one point, but basically, at the town transfer station, they built two rectangular fields and the plan does call for additional fields, but there is no under drainage and to build a 90-foot baseball diamond from scratch, that was the price tag that he had provided. So Vanessa is aware of this, I believe she wants to meet with the board or schedule an appointment to talk about it. And she, obviously, she expressed to me, and I'm sure she did to you, she understands the fiscal situation going on in Goffstown, but she's also concerned that there is, there really isn't a solid Plan B here if one of those two entities decides that they're not going to allow us to use their, their fields. We go year by year with the Allard family and we signed an agreement with them and they've been very kind to us. We do help a little bit in terms of maintenance on their, on their property. We do give them $5,000 to maintain the field each year. But it is, it's an issue, and Jared, I don't know if you wanted to share some more with your conversation.
Yes, so I'll use the term, please excuse me, the senior members of the school board, I think there's five of us, when I first joined, we talked about that seven years ago of, hey, we've moved to Division One, what's our plan? I know that, you know, those five members that were here then, we kind of, oh, we need to take care of this. It's been seven years and we really haven't talked about it. And this was really spawned because the villa, as people may or may not know, we have those Babe Ruth Bambino Fields right next to the villa. And they did add the parking there and thankfully, they did that because at the villa, they did allow parking there at one time, they no longer allow parking there for people that are attending those baseball games. So that was kind of a wake-up call to the feeder system into our high school system of, hey, people are restricting the use of space. And they got worried and I know that we've talked about it seven years ago and, you know, what is our plan? You know, I was talking to Scott and others, you know, I'm not asking for an engineered study of our property on Norman Road, but you know, is there an opportunity where we might be able to at least expend some type of impact fees for at least a site design of what it would look like if we did look to mature that property and include not only a new school, but baseball fields or anything else? You know, I think that. You know, I think that there's an opportunity that I think we need to start having the forethought of. There are 500 kids in our, younger, younger kids that are in our baseball system. And we've had a great, great high school football, sorry, great high school baseball teams in the past, and, you know, I just think it's something that we have to start looking forward to, and at least put a thought process behind.
Thank you, Jared.
I was gonna add, the other, you know, issue is, is that we do have this land, even if it was a modest amount, you know, maybe this is retreat discussion, et cetera, but to see where would a potential school go, where could potential fields go, you know, does it make sense? I mean, I have ridden the property with Jared, and, you know, there's, and the superintendent, I mean, there's areas that are hilly, and like, there are only certain spots where you would probably put a school, and then where would you put fields, et cetera, so one isn't even feasible. And then the other one is that whether it's Vanessa and her group, or having discussions with Parks and Recreation, or the Board of Selectmen, to talk about, I'm sorry, the Select Board, to talk about, you know, what are some options out there? So we do have impact fees that we have, and the other one is, you know, are there any other alternatives other than simply building a brand-new 90-foot baseball diamond from scratch? In terms of, is there the ability to put, to tuck a field, like, in the corner and build a backstop, and, and yes, part of your rectangular field might be an infield of a baseball field, but is there any other options if we were in a desperate situation?
Go ahead, Ginny.
I believe too, when we turned, part of the problem was when we turned D1, that the boys, JV and Varsity play home games together. Before, it worked better because the boys and girls traveled together, and we had a girls' field and a boys' field, so we only had to have, like, one field. But now that it's D1, we have to have two 90-foot fields. And so if one of our friends decided not to let us use a field anymore, we're in big trouble, because we need two fields in order to have a D1 team. So, just info.
Right, absolutely. Go ahead, Brian.
And I would just expand upon that. We are the only school district in Division One that has this problem. We are probably the only school district in Division Two that would have this problem. This is an old problem in Goffstown. We've never had a 90-foot baseball diamond here, and I agree, it is needed, it's been needed for decades here. I do like the partnership with the town. I think the price tag is maybe a little higher than it would need to be, particularly if you're thinking about DPW doing the majority of the work, which is kind of what their model has been on those fields. I think it is a retreat discussion, but it is absolutely something that we could use impact fees to do some surveying, to do some land assessment of the Norman Road property, wetlands flagging. You can identify, you know, this would be the location for schools, this would be the location for parking lots. I think you could identify fields, in that you could potentially start to develop parts of the parcel, but not the whole parcel. So maybe you start with the fields piece, and then maybe expand. We also, by the way, don't have a cross-country track. We're the only Division One school that doesn't have a cross-country track either. So we have needs, for sure.
So does anybody want to add? I definitely think it's a good retreat discussion. Is there any information we would want for that discussion at the retreat?
I don't know. I know that Vanessa did express, she wanted the desire to, you know, have an appointment, you know, a set, a time on the agenda in March or April to talk to the board about it. I mean, I think we probably highlighted a lot of what she said, but I think, I think she wanted that opportunity, along with others.
Well, I mean, they're welcome to request time. I don't know that beyond the very discussion that we've just had, what we would say to them. I mean, so we know that we don't have a baseball diamond, we don't have the funding for it. We've known this for a long time. Is it important? It is. We've had a great relationship and a great history with the Lyons Club. I don't think that the Lyons Club would surprise us and give us a short notice that we needed to vacate that property. The Allard family has been incredibly good to us, but a private family is a little different than an organization like the Lyons Club. But there is vulnerability here. We don't have a 90-foot baseball diamond. That is absolutely accurate.
So it is the board's pleasure. Go ahead, Reta.
I'm not really going to say anything new, other than I think it's, I think we need to revisit our vision on what we're doing, you know, with the land in the back. We know it's there, and I think being able to compare this to the town's land versus, you know, what other options we might have is just going to help to present back to the town. You know, here's the situation and get more feedback. So I'm in favor of bringing it to the retreat, to have a more in-depth, I think we started touching on it for the last couple of years about, you know, having to plan a little bit longer term on these things.
Yeah. Is there anything else any board members would want from admin at the retreat? Lauren?
This might be information that you all already have, but are impact fees held in separate because they could only be expended under certain?
Yeah, they can only be expended for additional type services.
Growth, typically associated with growth.
This wouldn't be identified deficiency?
Certainly, the evaluation of a parcel of land that the school district owns would fall well within that. The other thing I share about impact fees is they're only available to us for a certain duration of time. If you don't spend the impact fees, they go back to the developer that they were originally taken from.
Right, so I would think, I would, I would wonder if that, more of a financial portrait of what kind of, what do you have for impact fees? When are they expiring? Where are they going out? Would be maybe pertinent information for a retreat, but I'm sure you have that.
I'll have all that. It is way out that, when they expire, like, five years out.
We've actively used them.
We've used them.
Go ahead, Scott.
I wanted to add one thing, and I'd be remiss if I didn't explain this. Vanessa also wanted, the reason why she wanted to meet with the board is that she understands the fiscal constraints in our community. She talked about, yes, there are opportunities, perhaps, school land, town land, et cetera, but there's also trying to leverage community resources and grants, and making this a community endeavor, not just throwing a problem on the school board or the school district's lap, knowing that there are financial considerations. So she did talk about trying to get a groundswell of support in the community, and I should say, and Ginny, you know this, from all the different projects that have happened over a long time in Goffstown, whether it be the track that people like John Brown helped build, and, you know, there's been, there's a lot of contractors who have put in a lot of sweat equity on a lot of projects in Goffstown. And I think Vanessa wanted to highlight that, so she didn't want it to be like, oh, this is just, you need to figure this out. I think this is a community problem that needs to be solved, not a school board problem, per se.
Go ahead, Jack.
I could certainly monologue on athletic space fields, from the one soccer field that used to be the high school, to the expansion of the Lyons Field, the building of the Field of Dreams. I was part of all those things, and the community labor, and the businesses that built the resources behind that. And I got a few thousand hours in those two fields.
Nice. Thanks, Jack. Go ahead, Brian.
I was just gonna share, the other thing I'd like to share with Vanessa is, I think that they should also seek an audience with the Parks and Rec commissioners.
Yeah.
So I think the Parks and Rec commissioners should hear that there is this ongoing need, because I didn't hear that as part of their budget presentation. I know they were looking at pickleball courts and pools, and, I mean, so they haven't talked about field development, haven't heard that come up.
They have talked about it in terms of the overall development of the transfer station, of the sports, you know, plex over there, and there are, there is a master plan in terms of the types of fields. I think if you ask folks in Parks and Rec, they'll share with you that for the last decade, the growth needs have been more on the rectangular fields, and not, let's say, baseball diamonds or Little League-type fields. It has been rectangular, but that doesn't, but there was discussions about a 90-foot baseball diamond down there. So that has always been, something has been talked about.
All right, so before we move on, do we want to invite Vanessa sometime in March or April to come and talk to us, to then be able to discuss more in the retreat? What is the consensus of the board on that?
If they, my opinion, if they wanted to present kind of the demographics of the kids that we have in the program and the growth, I think it'd be good information for us to have.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, so we'll set that up. And then is there anything you would want to have at the retreat, more information that we can ask admin to look into, so we can have a good discussion on this? Is there anything you could think of? Can I think of anything now? Just email Scott or Brian or me.
We'll plan to have Mr. Cowett join us for that, Scott.
Yep.
And can you tell me what, when would you like to have Vanessa come before the board? You say April?
Either the end of March or April, whatever, however the schedule, because I know we have other presentations and stuff.
So we'll shoot for April?
Okay.
April, maybe early May if we had to.
Okay. Does that sound good? Okay, go ahead, Reta.
Can I just ask that Brian and Scott maybe prepare a list of the things that you do have back to us, so we can see if that's gonna, I mean, I have an idea, but for new board members, just seeing, what are the documents and what's the information that we do have right now, that we could use for the board discussion?
I don't know that we have any documents that would, Scott, can you think of anything?
For this parcel?
Well, like the land, you know, like any, any land surveying that we had done, or...
We had stuff done only first of all.
What are the funds that we have available?
We didn't do any surveying.
No surveying, but we had somebody go out there, right?
Well, yes, yes, we, I mean, we all went out there. There were surveys, and there was engineering that was done by TF Moran. So the previous owner had extensive engineering done, because there were multiple, there were multiple projects that were considered by the planning board. So there was a, there was a mixed-use development that was proposed back there, there were apartment buildings that were proposed back there. So TF Moran did all kinds of engineering work many years ago. And so things like wetlands flagging, that all has to be redone, that doesn't kind of last in perpetuity. So to Jared's point, there is an opportunity to use impact fees to get out there and start doing some of the preliminary assessment. You could start to put in rough structures of roads, there's a, there's a bridge that needs to be built back there. So there are a lot of things that impact fees could be used for, to continue to develop and expand the use of that property. So I think, I mean, and we've talked about that in the past, too. So, yeah, these are all great points.
Okay, so I'll bring it to the retreat.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Do you have a map?
Yeah, yes. He's still saved that.
Oh, I have it.
It's been a long time. All right, so...
He's probably got the TF Moran drawings in there.
Yeah? So are we good with the Babe Ruth discussion? We can move on?
No, actually, Dahlberg Land Services.
There you go.
Grab him before he leaves.
All right, so moving on to the Budget Committee. Jared, Jack?
There may be meetings after the deliberative sessions, if there's any numbers that change. I know our deliberative session's in the gym, and the school's deliberative session is in the theater.
No, they're both in the...
Part of the calendar.
Both in the gym, right, Scott?
Both in the gym now? Because in the town calendar, the town calendar says it's in the auditorium still.
Well, the only thing that really matters is the posting, so...
That is a posting.
The official posting of the meeting, that Mrs. Moran puts up.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we may have meetings, we may not.
Okay, thank you. C&amp;E, Ginny?
C&amp;E's next meeting will be February 10th at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
All right. P&amp;C, Reta?
P&amp;C did not meet this evening, will meet again on March 3rd. And then I do want to just bring up the Spring Fest, if that's okay, to get some guidance on this, since that's a couple of months away. Our next meeting is a couple of months away. So we have participated in the Spring Fest a couple of years, I think it's only two years that we've been participating in that. Last year was at St. Ace, the year before is at GHS. So they're looking, they are looking, they're recruiting right now to see who wants to set up, and the, my experience, and this is what I'd like to get from anyone that participated, but my experience last year at St. Ace is there was a lot of non-Goffstown people there, and there didn't seem to be, I'm not sure this is the right venue, and if I can just give you a short paragraph about what this event is. It says, "Discover product demonstration, free samples, discount coupons, and homemade goods at 120 booths run by local business crafters and organization. Try your luck with more prizes, raffles, and asylum auction. Enjoy cotton candy," and a visit by Bongo from the Fisher Cats. Anyways, I'm wondering if this is really an appropriate venue for the school board. We also did the National Night Out during the summer, which, for those that participated, I think was a more relevant event, so. I'm looking for guidance on whether or not you would like to do this again this year, and it would be April 5th, which is a Saturday.
So I was part of it last year, Carolyn, and I went, and I do agree, it was more Bedford people, because it's St. Ace, everybody was selling stuff. I mean, we did a raffle, but a lot of people had no idea who we were and why we were there. I mean, it was a great turnout in the whole place, but I think the National Night Out is probably, because it's more community, our community. Anybody else that was there, running the thing? Anything? There were a trillion people that came by, but they kind of walked by.
Yeah.
So it was a lot of people.
Right. We weren't selling anything.
Yeah.
You had to have fried dough.
I had cotton candy.
Fried dough, you get visitors.
I think the candy was the biggest seller.
Oh, the kids liked the candy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the tie-dye shirts.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll still find a reason to wear that in April.
Yes, that's right, we wore our shirts, yep. Okay. So is the consensus to pass on that this year?
I think so.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything, nothing else, Reta? All right, Shane, Policy?
So the Policy Committee's been working through a lot of dents and required statute-based policies, so it's taken a lot of time, a lot of consideration of those policies. However, we do have a handful of policies coming forward for First Read tonight, that will be in new business. And our next meeting will be on February 10th at 5:30 at the SAU office.
Great, thanks, Shane. All right, Dan, Technology?
Technology, that would be Jack, Reddick, and I, met on January 8th with Stephen Borget, or Jay, depends if I put the little French accent in there enough. And what we can talk about is the stuff that is public, and as we alluded to earlier, the Huddle, it's, we're using, they're talking about needing parental consent, because Huddle still won't meet the requirements to satisfy all of the entities who are part of the group to keep the student data, whatever we hire that attorney to do for us. So it hasn't been renewed, we're going to keep it till the end of the year, because that's what our policy says. The other one is typing, typing.com. They did not renew their, the privacy agreement either, so they're looking at other items to use for typing. We will meet on either February 5th or February 12th, and I think, Reta and Jack, you said either one works, and so we'll meet at 4 o'clock, it's a Wednesday, at the SAU.
Okay, great, thank you, Dan.
There's SpongeBob typing, that's how my kids learned to type. There was a software, and it had all, SpongeBob following them along as they were typing.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so...
My typing had these little metal arms that came in and whacked on a piece of paper and ripped it.
Yes.
You had to press a log harder.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's funny.
All right, so to reiterate what Jared had said, the school district deliberative is February 3rd, which is next Monday, at 7:00. It has been moved to the gym, because anticipation of a group of people. So we're not going to have a board meeting before, so we're going to meet down at the gym at 7:00.
May I just say that there is babysitting available also?
Yes, yes.
Childcare is available.
And do we know where that is? Is it in a classroom?
It'll be in a classroom.
But it'll be well-marked and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yes.
So Heather, did we talk about who is going to do all of the other cool stuff? Are you doing that?
Yep, that's, that was on the, where'd it go? It was on the thing.
Well, we've just got to do, what it is, is who's going to move, who's going to second, and who's going to speak to it. So we need to do that for the budget, we need to do that for...
Yep, it was on the, it was on here.
The Capital Reserve Fund.
Yep.
And the fourth one we don't, that's up to whoever...
The Citizens Petition War and Article, we don't address, so it's just the budget and the C R F deposit.
Yeah, so that was on the agenda, so we do need to discuss that tonight and figure out who's doing what, because next Monday is the deliberative, right? Next Monday?
So we've only got two articles?
Yep.
So...
So who's going to do the budget discussion? Was Article, that's Article 2?
You mean the presentation?
Yeah. Article 2 for the budget presentation. Is that Scott?
Yeah, who did it at the public hearing?
I think, yeah. I think I'm getting told to do it.
Jerry and Scott?
I, I don't know, I, I was told I was a little bit like Pluto on a...
Pluto?
Yeah.
Puppie?
What's that?
Animal, animal. I don't know who Pluto is.
So, you know, it was like, long story short, I was winging it during the, the public session, so if people were happy with that, I'm happy to do it again.
All right. Is everybody good with Jared and Scott?
Typically, if the person who makes, who's going to do the presentation typically makes the motion.
Right.
So I will make the motion.
So if Jared's going to speak to it, he would make the motion, so we need someone to second the budget.
Right, so who's going to second the budget? Rheta?
Okay, so what it's going to be is...
Wait a second, did Jack, Jeff's actually...
You want Jack?
Yeah, that would make sense since he's...
It, it would make sense as the Budget Committee rep. So Jared is going to move, who's going to move Article 2, you're going to second, and then Gerald will speak to it.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that good? And then Article 3 is the C R F, so who would like to speak to that?
And the default position is Mr. Gross.
Yeah, default, yeah.
If, if there are no takers...
If you help me, I don't mind doing it. Administrator that does it.
You got to volunteer.
For what, Lauren?
If you, if you help me through it, yeah.
The C R F?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if Lauren, you're, you're going to move it?
Yep, so she'll make the motion.
So now we need someone to second Article 3.
The C R F, yep. Would you like, Ginny?
Ginny will second. So Lauren, we'll work with you, we'll set you up for success. Scott's already got it figured out.
And, and that will include the presentation?
Yeah. Yep.
All right, and that's it, right?
That's it.
Do we have any other motions or seconds?
The only other article is the Citizens Petition War and Article.
No, but we don't...
But before that, you have the presentation of the awards.
Right.
We do.
And that's all taken care of.
That's all taken care of. Rheta's going to get up and talk to the...
We'll have three, and they're, they're almost done.
Good.
Yep, they're in process right now.
Are we having any plays or anything from any of the kids?
Not that I've heard of. I love it when we're able to do that.
Yeah.
We're in the gym.
They do have a performance coming up, though. We, we haven't scheduled that, so I'm, I'm not, we haven't, we haven't done that for a couple of years.
Yeah, we haven't done that for a couple of years.
But I, in the past, I loved it when we did that. I thought it was really...
The corral times. Kane, a couple of times, saying the national anthem and stuff.
Yeah.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I don't think that that's been scheduled.
All right, so we have...
Do you know different?
I haven't heard anything.
Are you expecting a lot of people? Is that why it's in the gym?
It's hard to know.
Yeah.
It's hard to know.
And Mrs. Moran types up everything, Lauren and Jack, right in front of us of who's doing the motion, who's doing the second, so it's, if you forget what you're supposed to do, she'll have it for you.
We got you on track.
I'll jump up and cover you, Lauren.
So we got, the only thing is if the fourth article, if there's an amendment done at the deliberative, do we as a board have to meet after?
Yes.
To then recommend or not recommend?
You have to post a meeting.
So that would be the only thing, so I don't know if we have to post something?
Yeah, we do, a potential meeting.
Potential meeting for after, for Article 4.
Right, and that's where Jared, if the Budget Committee meets as well, he says, okay, who's meeting first?
Yeah, you did this one time.
Budget Committee won't have to vote on that, that's...
Not on that 4, but if the...
But if you have other stuff to do.
I know the money article.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be the only thing we would have to do after is to meet real quick, so we'll have to post that.
Yep.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll just do it...
TBD, it'd be a suspension, suspension of a meeting.
Ready, it's going to be after the deliberative session, immediately following deliberative session. I think I've seen that before.
Yeah, just in case we have to do anything with Article 4.
And, and remember, it could be Article 2, so if there, if there were changes or amendments, anything.
Yes, just true, if there is.
And actually 3 as well, so I mean, they could change anything.
Well, that's, yeah, they could change anything, but we got everything else, right? What about motions to restrict, no, we don't have to do any of that?
We'll wing it.
We'll wing it, okay, everybody's good.
Well, I mean, typically, by the time you get through the budget, you're, you only have, you could, you could always move to restrict reconsideration when you finish an article.
Everything.
Yeah, you can, you can definitely...
It's a good plan.
I just want to make sure, especially our new board members, that everybody knows what, what's going on. Is everybody good? We got, we covered everything? Okay.
I'm not, I'm not a meeting that you need us.
No, you guys don't need to be there. I mean, you could be there to watch as a community member, but...
And I might be as a community member.
But you don't have to be there, because we're not going to do a board meeting. All right, so we're good? Superintendent's report?
Thank you. So just a few quick updates for the board. I did send out, since your last meeting, additional information regarding the Power School PAC situation, as well as the Google Class Action lawsuit. We will not be providing any additional information right now with respect to Power School until we've been directed to do so by council. So at this point, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, but I wanted to let you know about that. Last week, Goffstown was selected by the New Hampshire Education Department for federal programmatic consolidation monitoring, and that is something that Mrs. Kohler has been working very hard on, and I've asked her to speak briefly to what this is and what she's been doing about this. Mrs. Kohler?
So basically, Goffstown has been picked for monitoring for everything, grants, testing, looking at all of our procedures for New Hampshire SAS. So I did do monitoring two years ago for New Boston, and the breadth of what they are looking for in comparison to what I did two years ago to this time around is significantly more. I anticipate that when we receive feedback from the state on certain things like McKinney-Vento, work around our, our foster policies, parent involvement policies, those are things that we have not looked at for a while, so I anticipate we'll get some feedback. Any feedback that we receive from the state, we'll have six months in order to make changes. I do, like I said, anticipate some policies that we're going to need to look at, probably in March and April. So just wanted to let you know that that is going on right now, monitoring everywhere, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kohler. So the board is aware that over the years I've talked about the possibility of a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant for a generator for Goffstown High School. This is something that I've talked on and off about for years and years and years. Chief Murray has been working hard with our FEMA rep. There is a Hazard Mitigation Grant available. This is the one that is the 75% match, 25% local contribution. There are two different grants that we've looked at over the years. Most of the time, it's a 50-50 match. Over the years, we've been kind of waiting for and holding out for the 75-25, and that appears to be available. So one of the things I wanted to mention to this board is we have had a long desire to move the emergency shelter from Mountain View Middle School to Goffstown High School. There are a number of reasons for that. The Fire Department and Police Department are in full support. The generator at Mountain View is from 1989. It does not do the entire building. As you know, there are lots of issues potentially with getting in and out of Mountain View, which has one way in, one way out. So this site would be preferable, and if we were able to get a grant, this is something that we would need to put some money on. So the 25% would be, does include in-kind donation, so let's say, for example, we were going to put a pad out back and we had D P W help us with the pad and materials, that counts as part of our 25%. So I'm pretty excited about this. I really appreciate the work that Chief Murray has done pursuing this, and I think at this point, I'd like to, I'd like to go forward with this. How are we going to pay for that? This is a great reason to use the 5% contingency fund. So we've looked at this in the past. Mr. Loring is having the prices updated, the quotes updated, but for a propane generator, he was looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000. So if it's a 25% match, we're probably looking at about 100 grand. Now, that could include D P W time, that could include use of material, equipment, all of those things, but if this is something that the board is in support of us pursuing further, we'll go start chasing this. I didn't want to get too far down the road if the consensus of the board was, you know, we want to, we want a budget for that, so we don't want to use the 5% contingency fund, or you want to consider a warrant article, or something of that nature, but if you'd like us, we are ready to chase this, and this is the one to chase. The 50-50 one is still terrific, and if you can get one half off, that's great, but wouldn't you rather get it three-quarters off?
Yeah. Go ahead, Ginny.
If, if we got this grant and, and put this center at the high school, wouldn't this be an advantage for the town?
Of course.
I mean, this is not a school thing that we're doing, it's a, it's a town thing.
Community.
So wouldn't we be able to ask maybe the town for some of that money in it, in that it's going to be that much money that the...
You certainly can, and over the years, we had that very discussion with the Select Board in New Boston for this same topic.
Okay.
So if, if this is something that the board is comfortable with us pursuing further, you know, let's, we're going to reach out and start to get more formal about this, and we'll work with Chief Murray, and we'll, we'll plan to bring a, a further proposal, but this one looks really good. And in the past, we've waited for the 75-25, we've, we've watched the 50-50s come and go, but this is the one that we've held out for, and I think it's really worth chasing. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Rheta.
We've been talking about this and trying to pursue this for such a long time. I think it's the time to do it. And it is, with all the things that are happening, you know, the natural disasters, whatever, it seems like it is really critical to the entire town to have this in place, because we can't power up the whole school, if the kitchen isn't fully functioned, then it's not, it's not a resource to the community.
So is everybody good with them moving forward? Go ahead, Jared.
You know, I, I think it makes sense to move forward. A comment and a question. Is Chief Murray on board with us going for this? Because I know that the water precinct is also looking for a generator for some of their water pumps.
Oh.
So can we just make sure that we have deemed agreement that we're...
Well, that's, that's still a little fresh for me. The last time, I think what Jared alluding to is, the last time this was available, the town used it to buy the generator for the new firehouse, and it made us ineligible to apply for the grant. I think that's what Jared is speaking to.
Yep. Second question is, I know that you mentioned the contingency or reserve fund. Is this eligible for C R F, or is this eligible for impact fees? Because I don't think we should be using emergency money for this, even though that it is a planned grant.
So I would say C R F, no. The only, the only school arguably that we could use would be Mountain View to replace the existing generator, so I think if we were pursuing Mountain View, then yes, but I think for the high school, no, and no, no on impact fees. Well, my initial assessment would be no on impact fees, but I'd be happy to explore that further, and if, actually, let me think about that a little bit.
It is, it is increasing the capacity for...
It, it is.
Because I, I'm hesitant to try to tap into the contingency fund, because we've always said it's a risk mitigation fund, and this isn't risk mitig, it, it is a risk mitigation, but it's a different type.
Yeah, let us give a little more thought to that, and if, if that's a possibility, we can certainly chase it, but I think the 75-25 appears to only come around once every 10 years, because I've been waiting a long time for it. So let, let's chase after it, see where, where it takes us. Thank you. One thing with respect to the Budget Committee that was mentioned earlier, I would like the board to consider this. After, after the vote in March, after the Budget Committee reforms with, you know, the new group, I would like to consider going to the Budget Committee and asking the Budget Committee to meet with school administration and non-public to get input on the teacher contract. So as we know, we'll be negotiating a contract next year with G E A, and I'd like to preemptively consider having a conversation with the Budget Committee about the importance of the contract, about having a competitive teacher contract to be able to recruit and retain staff. As we know, the Budget Committee will vote to recommend or not recommend the article. I'd like to consider having a conversation with them before we even start negotiations. Different approach, but I'd like the board to give that a little bit of thought. That contract will be really important to us, and support from the Budget Committee would be important for that. I wanted to let the board know, I received a notification from Town Hall. There is a new, Scott, and I don't know if you've got this one on your radar, new 46-lot open space subdivision, along with two-lot subdivision and lot line adjustment on a property just off Terrell Hill Road, and it would also connect Acorn and Sage. So this has apparently gone before the Planning Board, and the Planning Board reached out to me to see if we had any input on this. Obviously, anything that brings elementary kids in is the concern for us, but I didn't know if the board wanted us to take any kind of a formal position. Scott, did you have anything to add on this project that you know about?
We did talk a little bit about it earlier at A and F. It is a project that, that is in, that it's, would expand what's now called the Spice Rack or Cinnamon Woods area, and it would connect that development through Acorn Drive, which would connect, for the most part, Tyrell Hill to Tibbetts Hill. It's 46, I think, houses.
Forty-six plus two more.
Right.
So I think it's 48 lots.
Okay. And, you know, one of the things that, that comes up is we could, we could provide the Planning Board with Mark Fugere's report that he gave us a couple of years back, where he said it was, you know, 1.0, what was his, what?
1.64.
1.64 SAC?
Was it the student-age children?
School-age, right.
School-age children.
So we could provide that to the Planning Board to say, hey, this, this, you know, this could have an impact of, you know, 60, 70 students.[1647.22] have an impact of, you know, 60, 70 students." Can't hurt.
So I'll leave that if the board would like us to take action.
Go ahead, Ginny.
I have to say, I remember the year that the Spice Rack opened up, and the bus came down from the Spice Rack to Meadowlock Road, and the kids couldn't get on the bus because it was already full. And so I'm thinking that a lot of kids are probably gonna end up getting on the bus, because the impact then wasn't going to be many kids were going to come to school. And then we were totally surprised at the number of kids that were school... Elementary school-age kids, because this was the school... Elementary school bus that came, and it wrecked havoc. So I think we really have to let them know that this could be a disaster for elementary school.
I'm just not sure that the Planning Board is gonna be in a position to not approve a very large development, just because we're a little concerned about elementary enrollment. So I think on this one, we're happy to take action that the board would like us to, but I don't know if it'll make much of a difference. I mean, the one that we were more concerned about was Bog Road.
Which is gonna open soon.
Yeah, that ship has sailed.
Go ahead, Rhonda, and then Lauren.
So are we able to get impact fees from these developments, or is that...
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Unless the Planning Board makes some kind of an arrangement with the developer that they don't have to pay them. I mean, that's not our purview, but...
But you could speak to it, right?
We can speak to anything we want.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Oh, thank you. Full disclosure, that's my neighborhood. So I've been following it pretty closely. It does also have the potential to be more than 46 houses, because the reason that it's limited to 46 at this point, as presented to us as a butters, was that the reason it's smaller is because they are maintaining an open space. They're also looking at trying to get that, as I recall from, again, the presentation just changed a couple of times, to do away with... They said, "Well, we could just do away with the open space and put more lots in." So it is still very fluid, and I do remember even when I was on budget, when you were talking about Maple Ave capacity, saying, "I can take five kids. If I take 10 kids, 13 kids at the wrong grade level, big problem." I don't know that the planning... I don't know if those numbers would be helpful to the Planning Board, because people can say, "I'm worried about schools, I'm worried about schools," but I don't know that, you know, that board has the time to really watch all of your meetings. So those numbers might be helpful.
And we haven't realized the impact of the Bog Road development yet.
Plus, there's other developments that are already approved.
So would it be the board's prerogative for us to send a letter and just say, please, you know, something to the effect of, "We support growth and development in Goffstown, but just be mindful of the impact on school enrollment, and, you know, we're still realizing the impact of, you know, Bog Road and other developments"? Okay, we'll do. We'll do. Thank you. On February 17th, at our regularly scheduled board meeting, we've invited all of our... We invited Senator Murphy and our members of the General Court. So far, I have three yeses and one no. So I wanted to let you know that invitations went out to Senator Murphy and our state reps. And I wanted to let everyone know, sort of just full disclosure before this meeting happens, I do not see this meeting with our state reps as an opportunity for me to take grievances with anything with respect to school funding, or any of the 264 bills that pertain to public education that are before legislators this year. So I'm not planning on having an active role in the conversations with the state reps. This isn't... This is your opportunity to interact with them. So I just wanted to be clear on our roles, that as strong as I can come off about school funding and some of these things, I will not be taking that approach with our state reps. I think this is the opportunity for elected officials to engage with each other. But I wanted to let you know, 264 bills are being tracked that pertain to public education. The School Administrators Association has a list of all those bills. If anyone is interested in seeing them, I could say so. We went looking today, and I don't believe the School Boards Association has developed one yet. They always do. But just to let you know, Senator Murphy has sponsored 131 bills. Representative Alexander has sponsored 21. Representative Renfert has sponsored eight. Representative Barry has sponsored 47. Representative Seidel, 39. And Representative Giesen, our new one, Henry, he sponsored nine. So if anyone's interested in seeing the bills that your state reps have sponsored, they're all available online. It's very easy to see. If you go to New Hampshire House Representatives, you can click on Find My Legislator, and then you click on Hillsborough County, then you click on the Town of Goffstown. That will bring up all of our state reps. And when you click on each of their names, there's a button that you can see all the bills that they've sponsored. So I'm sharing where you can go find the information if you're interested in learning about bills that they've sponsored. But just to be clear...
The two floterial representatives.
Yeah.
Didn't...
Barry and Mazur.
We have two floterials.
You said Barry.
And Mazur's the other. Mazur sponsored 21. Yep. So I just want you to be aware that if you'd like to see what they've sponsored, and there are a bunch of bills that are focused on public education. But just to be clear, I'm not planning... I don't want our state reps to think that they're walking in here and the superintendent's gonna beat them up on school funding. That's not what this is gonna be. This is an opportunity for us to engage with our elected officials. And just to be clear, I'm not planning to take any kind of an advocacy role in that. So thank you for that. And we've already talked about it, but I think there is no need for a meeting, with the exception of possibly after deliberative if anything were to change. So I'm glad... I think it's been hard in the past to have a meeting before deliberative.
Yes.
I think that that's hard on the board, so I appreciate that we've been able to make the agendas work.
Yeah.
I think that's better. And that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Mrs. Kohler, Mr. Gross, any one of us. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Dan.
Just a quick note. I did see the email. So we all get an email from the New Hampshire School Board Association. They had some links in there. I didn't click through all of them, but if you check your inbox, there's also some information. And then the question I had, when you gave us the list of bills that have been sponsored by different reps in the Senate, are these specifically education bills?
No.
Or they're just general bills?
They're just all the bills.
Okay, great.
I just wanted you to know that, you know, that they've sponsored this many, and then if you want to go see what they are, it's easy... It's never been easier to see. That website is really pretty easy, that you just click on, you know, each one, and then you can see all the bills that they've sponsored.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rhonda. Anyone else? All right, so we don't have any old business. New business, Shane? First reads?
Yep, so new business, we have first-read policies. Four of them are in the A section, and one of them is GBAM. Couple of policies relate to accommodations for nursing mothers and pregnancy and related medical conditions. The other ones, again, are some of the more required statute-based policies that we've kind of had to pick through, and we really have relied on some model policies because of the fact there's so much legal language and legal reference... Or so many legal references in there. So look them over. If you have questions or comments or ideas, bring them back to us.
All right, next meeting. All right, thank you, Shane.
Of course.
All right.
At the time, it did it to me. It did it to me at policy and whatever, and it said nursing mothers and pregnancy, and I said, "Students?" But this policy is our employees.
Staff.
Staff, correct.
Yeah.
So I didn't want the public out there.
Wash your mouth with soap.
Scared you.
I constantly have to talk with my kids in my classroom. Uh-uh. Like, because they bring it, and they're like, "Miss Bean, there were questions on the survey." And I'm like, "See, don't even think that way. You're high schoolers."
That's class had four.
Moving on to staffing.
So staffing, a number of track changes for your notification only, so we will send congratulations to all of them. One leave of absence and one student observer. I continue to be hopeful when I see student observers. There just aren't enough people going into public education. And as somebody who deeply cares about and believes in public education, I'm so glad whenever I see that we have a student observer or an intern, because there just aren't enough young people coming into this incredibly important profession. And the bottom part of the staffing sheet should look new and different to you. So let me explain a little bit of what we've done here. The Department of Ed is now requiring us to have a tracking method that school boards have approved, a one-year certificate of eligibility for a teaching license. This used to be called emergency authorization to hire, and the department is asking us to have an accountability that the board knows that it's a one-year certification that we've issued to someone. So we wanted to track it this way. So I would be asking for your approval for a one-year certificate of eligibility for teaching for Rita Jackman, who is currently working as a part-time music teacher at Bartlett. This would be through the end of the year. And the second would be Olivia Strange, who's working here at Goffstown High School for the remainder of the year as an English teacher. So we would ask for your approval of the one-year certificate of eligibility for Rita and Olivia.
Dan?
How many one-year approval can we do in succession?
So you can only... So it used to be one year only. There's now an ability that you can do a second year, but they've changed some of the... Like, we're doing this now because they've given us new guidance that they have to... You have to show that it was clear to the board that it was a one-year certification. So we separated out this way, but we can do one year, and then you can do a second year if you need to. Anything you would add to that, Mrs. Kohler?
Yeah, the only thing with the second year is it has to be in the same position. So if somebody's taking over a position for one year, let's say as a language arts teacher, they can't then get that one year extended for like a social studies position the next year. It has to stay in the same position for two consecutive years.
So they can't get a new one year in a different...
Correct.
They have to actually go through the accreditation process?
Yes.
Yes.
And get that three-year certificate.
Okay. Yep.
All right, so go ahead, Ginny.
So every long-term sub, you have to...
No, not every long-term sub. This is because we actually issued her a one-year certification as an emergency authorization to hire. So it's not just every long-term sub. The long-term subs are typically already certified. That's why we're able to hire them as long-term subs, is because they have teaching certification.
Okay, okay.
But anytime if we have one of these one-year authorizations to hire, we're gonna do it this way, so that we have a staffing sheet and we have the approved minutes that we can show that the board approved the positions. And we think that that's sufficient for the tracking and monitoring that we have.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Ginny.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year certificates of eligibility as presented.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion?
Just a comment that as presented includes the retroactivity of these, because the dates of retroactivity are not here. December 2nd and November 4th of '24.
Let's hope it's presented.
If it was retroactive to that, that would be fine. I think as long as we have it within, you know...
Well, no, he said as presented, so I just wanted to make it clear.
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 Gotcha.
Yeah.
Could clarify it.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student? Opposed? Abstained? We are unanimous. Everybody said yes.
Thank you.
All right, so no more with teachers. So before we get into other business, we should probably start adding. Top three things.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's add it to the agenda. So I have... I picked three things. We'll open it up to discussion. The first one I chose was the public hearing on the laptop carts. Second one was the FBLA presentation, and I'm hoping the audio comes out okay for that. And then the portrait of the graduate.
I'm good with those. Anybody?
Good for me?
Yep.
All right, any other business that may come before the board? We do have non-public tonight. All right, so see none. We'll move on. I'll need a motion to go on to non-public under RSA 91A 32C. By Caroline, do I have a second?
Sure.
A second.
Ginny, I'll do roll call. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes, and we are in non-public. All right.
So we'll go down to the...